All right, welcome everybody. We'll call to order the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 28, 2022. Under action items, we have 2.1. Oh, wait, let's get the roll call, please, Marine. Yeah, one last time. Geez, skip ahead already.
Wygo.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Gavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Anveen.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
That's great. Action items, number two, item 2.1, recognition of council members. I think we'll take them one at a time, if that's okay. We'll start with Ms. Dockler. So, I know Todd's got a plaque. I don't know if you want to say a few words, then we can allow any words for comments for council, so please.
I was told to ask you to adopt.
Yes. Oh geez, Todd's a stickler for the rules, so.
Mayor, I have a plaque. It says, Katie Dockler, in appreciation for your years of dedicated service as a member of the Grand Forks City Council, June 26, 2018 to June 28, 2022, on behalf of the city of Grand Forks, so thank you for all your service.
I'm honored. It's not very COVID friendly, but I really appreciate it. So I'm not very short-winded, so bear with me. Facebook reminded me today that exactly four years ago and one day, that I proudly stood here and took my oath to uphold the respect and dignity of the elected office of Ward Two for Grand Forks City Council. Weeks of door-knocking, completed meet-and-greets in local neighborhood businesses, and numerous conversations with many different people earned me the honor of serving you all, and I have not taken a moment for granted. As the 12th woman to serve since 1941, the second person of color to serve since 1976, and as the first woman of color to serve since the city's incorporation in 1881, I am truly fortunate to have been given the trust of community members who allowed me to help them make their community more reflective of their experiences, wants, and needs. Some of these changes included the resolution for Grand Forks to annually recognize and celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, to the implementation of two years of the welcoming community roadmap, collaboration on improving rental and loud party ordinances, and the adoption of hate crimes ordinances to deter, protect, and reinforce the dignity of all people here. We sat through a lot of takes on leadership lately. To me, leading in community does not exist without tension and the ever-constant pull of need, but I refuse to believe that these needs must always compete to the detriment of one another. Community building is not a zero-sum game. We can build a vibrant, thriving, inclusive community that allows ownership and belonging of all of its people. It's our responsibility, and let's be real, building community, one which we want to be a part of, doesn't just happen. It's real, backbreaking, sometimes swearing, sometimes crying, sometimes mourning and taxing work, but it's the kind of work that people were made for. We were made for relationships, and we were made for community. We may mess up on it often, but certainly that cannot be an excuse to not do the work that remains. Leadership isn't a photo op. It's not about garnering support for the next campaign, nor should leadership be focused on personal advancement, or being the loudest in the room. Rather, leadership is about showing up on time and time again, ready to dig in to make life better for all people. It's about humility and understanding that you're not infallible, that with new information you can change course and take responsibility for missteps, that making a mistake doesn't make you a bad leader, not taking ownership of your actions and refusing to move forward and through it is what makes one. Leadership is making the hard calls by listening, hearing, and seeing all the people and their thoughts and wants, and not waiting until it's politically convenient. Leadership is about trailblazing and making a path for people coming afterward, and leadership is about making space to let others forge ahead. There's still so much work ahead of us, and while I'm not saying never again, tonight I'm hanging up my elected shoes and welcome a restorative break. All of my 30s to date, the majority of my children's lives, I have served my community in a formal capacity, and it has been a great honor, but also a huge burden. I am grateful for the support, the opportunities, and the relationships because of it, but also want to recognize the toll that it does take on people, on all of you. The stress to your relationships, the mental health impacts, the missed dinners and the missed kids' goodnight kisses at bedtimes, these things all add up. And then you throw in political climates and a general loss of civil discourse, where now you don't just disagree on how to fund and repair roads and potholes, but also feel personal threats and no one bats an eye. It's what you signed up for, they say. What can you expect? I expect more. I expect people to engage in a manner they'd like to be communicated with, regardless of how frustrated or angry, upset, or hurt they may be, because at the end of the day, don't we all want the same? I expect people with power and privilege to show up for those that are targeted or attacked, and make it known that such behavior is not acceptable and will not be normed, that even if you believe a statement or a person is harmless, that you listen and support the person who the intent is impacting. I expect people to listen, to read, pay attention, and engage when their community is going well, as much as when it isn't, and to be responsible for any misinformation or half-truths that they may hear and stand for the truth that they claim to own, to learn the processes and procedures of their government and systems so that they can most effectively engage instead of derailing a process. I expect people to understand that we do this work to make a better community for children, not for our children or anyone's children to become political fodder to fill airtime. And, lastly, I promise, I expect good people, like the ones that I have worked alongside over the years, who love fiercely and indiscriminately, people who believe in community at its most bare to be compassionate and service in action and translate that into doing the work. I expect them to step up next, to run for office and lead, especially when there is a void in leadership of people who look, think, or experience the things that they do. Leadership desperately needs you, and will all do better when we have representation and access to policy creation that impacts us. If it wasn't clear before, it certainly should be now, and I'll be here to help as I can because I take the responsibility of serving our neighbors to the best of my ability to heart and will continue to regardless of what title or role that I hold. So, thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we just, real quick, if anyone wanted to just have some, any comments for Ms. Dockler, her well wishes as she moves on to the next phase? Mr., start with Mr. Wygo, if that's okay?
Yeah, so obviously, sitting next to Katie for four years, it's been interesting. No, I'm just kidding. It's been great. I've learned a lot from Katie. Hopefully, she's maybe learned one or two things from me as well, but she's been a great neighbor, and being in Ward One, our wards are, they connect, and a lot of the issues that she was facing, I was facing, and vice versa, so it's been a good four years to be able to bounce ideas back and forth and, and work on issues and solve those issues together as a team.
Katie, it was, it was great to get to serve with another social worker. I've learned a great deal from you. I know I'll continue to learn from you, and I know that you'll continue to push for social justice issues and to make this a stronger community, and so I look forward to continuing to work with you. Thanks.
Thank you. What else? Ms. Mock, or Ms.? Yeah, let's go down the line. Yeah, go ahead.
I focused on my own comments, so I didn't prepare anything official, but it was wonderful to get to work with you, and I think it's interesting that, you know, we're an interesting complement to each other. I think maybe you told me that one of the Herald reporters said it was like watching the right and left side of the brain work, which is really interesting because we approach things very differently, but I think that's what brings balance and perspective to boards and bodies like this, is different perspectives and working together. So, thank you.
A few things for you, Katie. One, you know, two years ago, I had lots of questions coming on, and you are always more than welcome to, you know, answer my questions and take the time to talk to me. What I really enjoyed was that when we disagreed, the discussion was just as good as when we agreed. So I really appreciate that, and I also appreciate all you've done to bring forth social issues, and appreciate that you will continue to do so within the community.
Yep, and thank you, Katie. It's been really a big honor for me to have served with you, and maybe more importantly, to learn from you. So many of the social issues, and not just social issues, it was, it was really throughout almost all of the agenda items that we had. And so, again, it was great to, to work with you, to understand you, and to see your leadership, to address tough, tough subject matters, and to continue and carry forth in them. So I look forward to continuing to have a relationship with you and, and learn more, and hopefully be able to contribute more because of what you, you've brought forth. So, thank you.
President Sandy, any comments? You can, without crashing, please.
Hey, I hope you, I hope you can be okay. I certainly, I just wanted to mention that Katie is one of the most passionate and compassionate people that I've ever met, who serves and has served her constituency so well, and will continue to do that in the future. And I've learned a lot from Katie, and she's certainly made Grand Forks a better place for serving. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you. Well, I'd just like to say a few comments. I was kind of wondering what I'd like to say tonight, and I just really want to say I've appreciated the two years that you've been on. We may have butted heads at times, but nobody could ever doubt your passion for the community. We may not all agree on, on the path of where we're going as a community, but we do all agree on the goal, and that's, that's a better community. So I want to wish you the best of luck and whatever's next for you, and we know you'll bring the same passion that you brought here and on the school board to that. So, thank you for the two years, thank you for your service. It is difficult, it's tough on family, it's tough on time, it's tough on your spouses. So enjoy that extra time that you've now gotten back and, and make the most of it. So, thank you, Katie. Now, we've got Vice President Jeannie Mock. Right, we got to find out first which one of the troublemakers was it last night? Which one pulled the fire alarm? Is that the one? They look like fun, don't they, but they make a lot of noise. All right.
What a moment in time. That was awesome. Jeannie Mock, I can appreciate you for your years of dedicated service as a member of the Grand Forks City Council, June 24, 2014 to June 28, 2022, on behalf of the city of Grand Forks, so thank you very much.
It's intimidating being down here and talking. I don't normally prepare remarks, usually I just go off the cuff. So I'll start that way and just say, we have a big birthday. Somebody turned five and learned a very important lesson, that we don't pull fire alarms, because we had that experience on the eve of turning five, so we don't need to do it again, right? Yep. Yes, you are five years old. I wish I could remember what the issue was better, but I remember a few years back, I was talking to Pete or working with Pete on an issue, and it was something, you know, for the community, for kids, and I remember saying, you know, my kids will love that, and he said, you know, that's why we do the work. And in so many respects, it's that simple. Making the community better is what drives our staff, the folks who volunteer on different committees, those who reach out with ideas and even complaints, and those who decide to run for and hold elected office. When I reflect back on the time serving Grand Forks and the citizens of Ward Four, I'm proud of myself for stepping up and taking the chance to do this work, and I've learned a lot about myself, a lot about public discourse, and a lot about the challenges and opportunities of local government. It's intimidating to put your name on a ballot and to be in the public eye, but I appreciate having grown in my abilities to ask questions, listening to opposing viewpoints, and working with people in times of agreement and disagreement. I think I've grown in my abilities and capabilities of a leader, and quality discourse on complex issues and really working with people are needed more than ever in government, and I challenged myself to do that while I was in office. One of the strangest things about being an elected office holder, as the country became more polarized, awash in conspiracy theories, and when we had to deal in real time to a global pandemic and the uncertainties that came with it, is that what makes a good leader and office holder doesn't necessarily make a great candidate. Candidates can be flashy and rely on polarization, but being moderate and thoughtful, willing to compromise with people who think differently than you, making difficult decisions when there are conflicting viewpoints and information coming from various sources, these are not necessarily appealing characteristics to voters, but they're really important to making a city work, to making a community function, and bearing responsibility for making decisions, feeling the weight of that responsibility, and working with people whom you didn't choose, but working with those people is the actual job. Making decisions if you didn't ask for the subject to be brought forward or aren't certain what you fully think is the job. And in the job, holding the office, I decided that part of that was to work with people regardless of personality or approach, and we all have personalities, that's for sure. But the strange thing is that most of us are likable and good at heart, and most of us really respect civil disagreements and discussions about often the most mundane of issues. That really is the heart of local office, especially at our local level. Intense discussions over parking and sidewalks, whether the road should go through a development or stop, the long-range transportation plans, planning and zoning meetings and the zoning changes and all of those things, they're really the building blocks of our local government. And disagreeing with council members on one issue and then voting the same as that council member on the next, that's really important, talking through the differences and the various viewpoints on camera, and disagreeing or having that civil discourse but doing it with respect. That's what the job, and that's what it takes to represent the city. When I began serving on the city council, I had two dogs. Eight years later, I have two dogs and three kids. And Grand Forks really is a great place to call home and raise a family. But one thing I always tried to remember is that while I was here holding the seat for Ward Four, is that I was holding it for all those people in Ward Four, to make, to do the job of voting on the bid awards and ordinance changes, sitting through the long and short meetings alike to keep the operations running and to make the community functional and serviceable to everyone. But I really tried to, to remember that it was a temporary seat, and I was holding it temporarily, and I'm ready to step aside and make room for a new voice to represent those people, and I just hope that people remember that we're all holding those seats in trust, but citizens can participate and help drive their projects and priorities, and that the service really is for the people, and it's why we do the work. I don't need to say more.
Guess we can go the same way, if you have any comments, Mr. Wygo?
Sure. I think I talked to most of the council members from time to time about issues in the city, but I think some of the most thoughtful conversations I've had have come with Jeannie. So, thank you for that. Thanks for listening and disagreeing at times, and I just thought we had a lot of really good conversations that, that touched a lot of different issues, so thank you for your service.
Can you let me jump in?
Yeah, let's let Ms. Dockler go. She's, it didn't quite work out, the order, so yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for being with me for the last four years, and it was an honor to serve together, and I'm excited to see what we're going to do moving forward. I think that you bring a lot to the table, and for the betterment of all people, you are the left side to my right side brain. And I think that we have a lot of good things that are ahead of us.
When I first started serving on council, I had the privilege of sitting next to Council President Gershman for a couple of years. That, that time period now seems like it'd been a very short period, and it feels like, really, the whole time that I've been here, I've been sitting beside you, and so it's going to be strange to be serving without, without sitting beside you. So thanks for all of that time. Those were big shoes to fill, and you've done very well with that. There's, there's much to say, but I'll, I'll sum it up with, with one thing, especially with the birth of Cannon and Grayson, I, it was great fun having children at, at the diocese here, infants at the diocese, and I just thought it was, it was fantastic. As, as Pete Haged said, and as you, you mentioned, that's who we're doing it for, is for the future generation. And then, how painful it was that you were critiqued, criticized for, for bringing your, your children to the council chambers, and yet you bore that criticism, as, as you always did with, with great grace, and didn't even give any indication that it was, it was bothering, although I know that it, it did at different times. So let me use that small example as a way to illustrate your, your courage and your demeanor. Again, I'll, I'll miss you. Thank you, Jeannie Schultz-Mock. Yes.
Jeannie, what I really appreciate most is, is our conversations, and the, what was interesting is every time you'd call me, you'd never bring your point of view first. You'd say, let's talk about this. Let's, what are, what are you thinking? Let's talk through this. And I was thinking about, you know, in my two years, my top 10 longest conversations on council, and I think that one through five are with you, you know, and that we're always, you're always willing to talk through the details, and I think I had some questions, you know, as a new council member that maybe didn't make sense, and I think that there are some that I only felt safe maybe asking you, and going through those has just been a pleasure, and it's been enjoyable, and really going to miss that, and I, I think that you have given a lot to this community, and we're very appreciative. So, thank you.
Jeannie, I guess I will probably reiterate a number of the things that have already been said, but again, I appreciate our conversations. It seemed like there was never a five-minute conversation, it was usually a half hour or so, and sometimes the children were in the background, and you knew that you were, you were home, you know, with, with your children. But the detail that you went through and your thought process, you were, you can tell you're a deep thinker, not always spontaneous, although I do have to say that when you have spoken, it's been very articulate and well-understood, and so those are just a few of the things I appreciate. So, thank you.
President Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor. I could probably write a novel about all the things that I could use to describe Jeannie. Certainly hardworking, intelligent, dedicated. She is a trusted, confident, and a mind, and somebody that I always loved too, when I was trying to make hard decisions or making both in with the city and my personal life. She's like the little sister that I never had, and I'm really going to miss her because she really has the quality of, she's Jane Grand Forks. She is a great representation of the, what Grand Forks is, and because of that, I know it's going to be hard to replace that element on our council. Like Ms. Dockler, she certainly left Grand Forks in a better place having served. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. Just a few comments from me. I truly appreciated your diligence and your attention to detail. I think my only regret is that it took two years. We finally got to sit down and have a beer together last week. Part of that might have been your daughter, yeah, okay, that's fair enough, but I just, I, which was a good thing. I appreciated the, you know, the chance to just reflect and talk about life, and, and hopefully, you know, in the future, we'll be able to continue to do that. So, thank you for your time, thank you for your work, and enjoy that beautiful family. Thank you. One more round of applause. All right, we've got item 2.2, recognition of municipal judge. Approach the bench, Your Honor. I always wanted to say that.
I'll let you do it just one time.
Now, we've got a, we have a plaque for you. Alvin O'Boucher, we'd like to call you Al, though.
Yep, that's what I go by.
In appreciation for-
Even in courtroom, by the way.
Yes. In appreciation for your years of dedicated service as a Grand Forks Municipal Judge, September 12, 2009, to June 28, 2022, on behalf of the city of Grand Forks, and I would say, just because we kind of see you as a department head, even though you're an elected official, you're a politician. You are a beloved member of our, our team, and we're so very thankful that you've been the municipal judge, and we know your success will follow in your path, and you've been a joy to work with, and we really appreciate you very much on behalf of the city department head team, so we love you.
Thank you, Todd.
I don't have anything written today, but I do want to, I'm going to have two comments, one later before I swear in our new municipal judge. I've been a municipal judge in some form since 2009, and I was also municipal judge for many of you didn't know, in Emmerito, and Laramore, and Northwood, and my term ends in those communities tonight, and I couldn't be there to swear in their new officers because I promised I would be here, but of course, I didn't know I was going to be here until this morning. Thank you, Sherry. And, you know, Todd touched on something, and I've really appreciated my service for the city, and, you know, we're kind of hidden out there. For you new people, we're in the County Correctional Center across from Home of Economy. You are welcome to visit municipal court at any time, but very seldom do any of you get out there except for administrative staff. But we are technically a city department, but we're an independent branch of government. As you know, there's a judicial branch, an executive branch, and a legislative branch in the city, and so we're part of that administrative-executive type of branch also, and also part of the city council, all of that, but we're separate. Very seldom did I get to see anybody. I didn't know anybody from the department, any of the departments, and COVID struck. And suddenly, I couldn't take any cases. They weren't jailing people. We were in emergency mode, trying to defeat this dreadful, I don't know, surge that was foisted upon us, and so whoever in their wisdom decided we weren't going to give up as a city, set up Zoom, and suddenly, because I didn't have court, I could appear and go to council or to city department meetings, and I had gone to a few in the past if I had a day off or something, which I seldom have. Anyway, during that time, I discovered the utmost competence of city staff. I was so impressed every day, from street maintenance, to executive, to the mayor's office, you name it. The citizens of Grand Forks are well-served by the city council and their department heads, and I have watched you on TV, especially lately, because it's been very entertaining, and I have no opinions on that stuff, but, or I can't voice it, maybe I can after tonight. But anyway, you didn't deserve much of the criticism you got, because I know from my work with you for many, many months during COVID, listening to not only how to deal with COVID, but all kinds of city plans, economic development, everything, how competent and dedicated you were as- and dedicated you were as citizens. So I was very proud to call myself an employee of the City of Grand Forks and a servant of the people of Grand Forks. And I wanted to really voice that opinion, because the only time I'm here is when I swear someone in or I have a personnel problem, which unfortunately was going on quite a bit for a while. Thank you, Tanji, and your office. And I got to know HR very, very well. And anyway, and it wasn't necessarily our doing, but that's just the way it turned out, where it's a very small office. And it's important that you fund judiciary adequately to do its service, and that you recognize the hard work they do. Our city clerk comes in, our clerk of court comes in every morning before 7:00, prepares the day's files. We start court at 8:30. Now, Mr. Rosenquist may change that. He has that prerogative, but that's the way it was going on when I got there, and it's still going on that way. And we do court until it's done, whether it's 2:30, 5:30, or whenever. And with COVID, we had long days, and I'm only part-time, and Kerry will only be part-time. But you still need to adequately compensate. And I will reiterate again, before I leave, my disappointment that the city council did not approve health insurance coverage, at least half, for this very important office in your community. And I know that you have a right to make your decision, and I accepted it, but I want to say again that it's important to adequately fund that office. So on behalf of my employees, who are now no longer my employees, as soon as I give Mr. Rosenquist the oath, I thank you all for all you've done for the court, and you've done for the community and myself. Thank you very much, and thank you for the award. My friend, Todd, I'm not afraid to call you my friend. I've known him for many years before I became judge. We go back a long ways. So thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Judge. Any comments for the judge?
I'll be brief. I may be the only person that's been into his courtroom, and it's for my day job, which is a good thing. So I've never heard anybody say a bad thing about Judge Boucher. And I think the thing I respect the most is how fair you were, how compassionate you were, and you're dealing with tough situations with people that are going through difficult things. So thank you for being compassionate. Thank you for being fair, and thank you for serving the City of Grand Forks.
All right, well, if nobody else is going to say anything, we got, anybody else? No? All right, well, Judge, I want to just thank you. I mean, any interaction that we've had was always a pleasant one. Certainly during the COVID pandemic, we had some conversations about a number of different things. I did not get out to the court during my term here, fortunately, not in a court appearance either, which was good. But from anyone that I've heard that's interacted with you, court appearance or otherwise, fair and honest are two words that come forward and come to the front. And I think as a judge, those are probably two of the best words that you'd like to be described by. So thank you for your service and like the rest, and enjoy that free time, enjoy that retirement, if that's what you're doing. Just enjoy the family and be pleasant. So thank you, sir. All right, with that, item three, we're looking for adjourn, signee die. So if I get a motion to adjourn on that front, Ms. Dockler, Ms. Dockler's motion, and Vice President Mocka's second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned. So just give us, we'll take a second here, and then we're going to, before we do a roll call, we are going to administer the, first the oath to Judge, future Judge Rosenquist, and then he will swear in the two new council members. So bear with us for just a second. All right. Welcome, everybody. Now we are in the Grand Forks City Council Organizational Meeting for Tuesday, June 28, 2022, and item number one is administer the oaths of office, starting with item 1.1, administer oath of office to municipal judge. So please step forward.
Do you have your robe, Judge? She's going to be robing you.
Okay.
It's traditional, when a new judge is sworn in, that they are robed by someone. It's just tradition. It's not in the law. So tonight, Mr. Rosenquist, who's yet to be a judge, a judge-elect, is going to have his wife robe him, which I think is really appropriate. Before I give Mr. Rosenquist his oath, I want to talk about oaths. Many of you have, all of you have taken an oath to be in office, right before you assumed your office. All of you did. All of you will soon, out there, the two of you who are elected. Mr. Phelan has had to take an oath, right? Because you're a city officer. Ms. Storsette has, Ms. Lundmark, anybody who is, Mr. Moszynski has, Mayor Moszynski. But sometimes we just go through these words, and we don't think about them. And I kind of did that as a judge, because they're words that we have to say by law. They're required to be taken by the city code, and I enforce the city code. Well, where did it come from? It came from the North Dakota State Constitution, which specifically provides the words, Article 11, Section 4. And it is a solemn oath that summarizes your duties as public officials and officers once you are elected to office and begin to serve. You have to swear or affirm allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office. Many in this country recently forgot their oaths. They have to take an oath at a federal level, a state level, and all kinds of levels for public officials. The oath is serious. The oath has meaning. And without that oath, and your adherence to the oath as public officials, we decay as a society, and there is no law in order. And that's becoming more evident every day, that some people in our country did not take their oaths to serve the Constitution of the United States and the laws of this country faithfully. And as a judge, a law enforcement officer, in my last act as a judge will be to give an oath, it would be wrong for me to not tell you, this is a serious matter upon which this city must be founded and exist, the State of North Dakota must, and the United States of America must exist. Because if local government oaths are not honored, none will be honored. So that, as I give this oath to my friend, who I know will be an excellent judge for you, Kerry Rosenquist, please be mindful of what I say and apply it in the future. Now surely, I think you, as all public officers, have done this already. I'm just asking you, when the time comes, to make a decision that may be against your friends, that may be against political expediency, that you remember your oath and your loyalty is first to your country, to your city, the State of North Dakota, the Constitution of North Dakota, and the Constitution of the United States of America. So are you ready, Mr. Rosenquist? Now, with an oath, you can swear under God, or you can affirm. And why do we do that? I asked Mr. Rosenquist how he wanted to be sworn in, and he has every right to tell me. Because we don't, we have to swear under God, or you can affirm. But some people don't believe in God. Some people have a different meaning of God. You don't have to swear to God to be under the duty to serve your country. So the North Dakota Constitution provides that. And why is that? The North Dakota, or the United States Constitution, the North Dakota Constitution believes in separation of church and state. It is a fundamental provision of our constitutions. So are you ready?
I am.
Raise your right hand. I, Kerry Rosenquist-
I, Kerry Rosenquist.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America-
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota-
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of City of Grand Forks Municipal Judge according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Municipal Judge of the City of Grand Forks to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. You said it correctly. You are now municipal judge. I'm officially retired. Congratulations. You ought to come up and give him his robe. And I'll leave this for you.
Well, Judge Rosenquist, I hate to do this to you, but we're going to put you to work right away, so. Item 1.2, yeah, give him one more round of applause. Yeah, any comments that you wish, please, Judge?
Just a few. I've taken this oath before. I took it when I was 17. I took it again when I was 21. I took it again when I was sworn in as a police officer for the City of Minot. I took it again when I was sworn in as a police officer of the City of Grand Forks. And I don't take the oath lightly. I promise to you that I will do the best that I can to uphold the integrity of the Constitution of the United States, of the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and the ordinances of the City of Grand Forks, and at the same time, be very cognizant of my interactions with the citizens of the City of Grand Forks. As it was pointed out in several speeches, and I've witnessed it myself over the past week, shadowing Judge Boucher, that the people that appear in that court are at their worst. They have problems. They're not there because they want to be. They're there because they have to be. And I promise you that I will uphold and try my best to maintain the integrity of the city, and at the same time, be firm and fair to the people that appear in front of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. All right, item 1.2, administer oaths of office to the council members. Are we going to do them together? Is that the plan? You guys, okay? So if Rebecca Osowski and Tricia Lunskey could step forward, please. What's that? Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, Dana as well. You need to do the same. Exactly. Perfect. Yeah.
How are you today? You raise your right hand, please. Aye. State your name.
Dana Sandy.
Do solemnly swear-
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
The Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of- the city council, excuse me.
Discharge the duties, the office of city council.
Duties of- According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations. President Sandy, I was asked to not let you speak, but I think the rest of them might want to speak.
Yep, Ms. Osowski and Ms. Lunskey, please take your rightful seat up here and represent your wards in the City of Grand Forks. We're going to have a roll call here. We've got some business. I'm putting everybody to work as soon as they get sworn in. You've got some work to do, too, so. And Ms. Mock did make the comment that it, because we're looking at finally getting some new chairs, and she said she'd finally leave, and we'd finally get some new chairs, but oh, well. All right, well, welcome. We are moving on to item two, general business. So if we get a roll call, please, Marine.
Certainly. Weigl.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Kavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Bean.
Here.
We have a corps.
Thank you. We'll keep this one short. We've got a few action items. 3.1, elect president of the city council. So I'll leave this up to the council now for any nominations for president of the city council.
Mayor Wachowski.
Yeah, Mr. Weigl.
Thank you. I've been thinking a lot about this lately, and really, who should lead our city council? I think it's an important job, and I remember when I was elected six years ago, the first person to reach out to me was Dana. He reached out. We had good conversation. We talked a little bit about what the future may hold. And as I look at where we're at right now in the City of Grand Forks, and I look at what the future is, whether that's a new turf facility, whether that's a new experience park for children, I think those are all important things that our communities need. And I've really liked how Dana has put himself out there. Sometimes him and I disagree. Sometimes others disagree, but I always know that he is focused on what he feels is best for the city, and I think that's important as we move forward, addressing a lot of the issues we have coming up. So with that, I would make a motion that we elect Dana Sandy as our president of the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Weigl. Do we have a second on that motion? We got a second from Mr. Bean. Any further comment? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, President Sandy. Item 3.2, elect-
Thank you.
Elect a vice president of the city-
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you want some comments, please?
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Weigl.
Okay. Thank you, President Sandy. Item 3.2, elect a vice president of the city council. So again, I'd open up to council for their, make any motion on the matter. Mr. Kavami, please.
So, you know, as Mr. Weigl had stated, we have lots coming up. And I think one of the most important things that we need on a council is different perspectives. And we need different perspectives to make sure that we are, you know, making decisions based on the way our community truly feels, and not one perspective, but making sure that we can have constructive comments and constructive dialogue. we can have constructive comments and constructive dialogue. And if I think of one person that has had, I would say constructive and often entertaining dialogue with Mr. Sandy, it would be Brett Weber. So I would nominate Brett Weber for vice president.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Cavami. Do we have, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I will, I will second that, too. I think Brett's one of the hardest-working council people I've worked with and across so many different platforms. And besides his busy job, he's working a lot and makes very good decisions and questions, and I appreciate it. So, gladly give a second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bean. Any further comments on the, the item?
Sure.
All right. Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Vice President Weber.
Thank you, Mayor.
You can leave. Any comments, Mr. Weber, please?
Humbled by the, the comments that I've heard already, and I, I hope that I can step into Vice President Mocka's shoes and, and execute the, the position as well as she has. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. On to item 3.3 would be the appointment of the city attorney. Again, the same, same procedure, looking for, for a council motion to appoint the city attorney, Dan Gostad. I've originally appointed him. I guess I'm appointing him, you're confirming him, but I think he's, he's done a great job. He's taken a lot of heat. He's, he's really, you know, sort of cut his teeth certainly in the last two years with the challenges of COVID, you know, working on a plant, all the economic development projects that we've done. Your responsiveness has been phenomenal, your, your diligence and the work that you've done in researching any of the questions that both the councils had, that times citizens have had, that staff has had. I've heard nothing but the best for your timeliness and your diligence and the work that you've done. So, I'd be honored to have you serve as a city attorney for two more years. So, I'll be making that appointment and looking for council to affirm that. So, Mr. Weber.
I'll move approval of that appointment. And Dan, I hope that you get some sleep sometime because whether it's a Sunday morning, a Thursday late at night, whenever, I'll, I'll just have a thought and I'll send you a text, and then you call me right away. Your, your accessibility, your, your collaborative nature with the, the council's been fantastic. It's been great working with you, sir, and I look forward to working with you again.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We got a second from Mr. Weigel. A motion from Vice President Weber and a second from Mr. Weigel. Any further comments regarding the item? And also, as part of this, Kristi Pettit will continue. I think she's done a great job as the, as a prosecutor. So, as Mr. Rosenquist has left, they both obviously work in the municipal court. So, we'll really appreciate her continued work and, you know, she's got a lot of respect from, from PD and from the community. So we appreciate everything she does as well. So, with that, and no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. And on that, we'll move on to item 3.31, memorandum of understanding regarding city attorney services.
No.
Or is that all part of it? Do we need a second, separate motion, or?
Do you need a second motion?
Let's do a second motion. We've got it on here as item 3.3.1. So if we get a-
I'll move approval.
Motion to approve. We got a motion from Mr. Weber, a second from Mr. Bean, sorry, Vice President Weber, and a second from Mr. Bean. Any further comments regarding the MOU? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That memorandum of understanding is approved. That motion is approved. So, we're up to adjournment. I'm going to, I'm going to look to see if we happen to have any new council members that would be willing to motion to adjourn and second that. So, otherwise, we can just sit here forever. You guys decide.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. We got a motion to adjourn from Ms. Lunskey, and we got a second from Ms. Osowski. I really enjoy getting to say all the skis now. We went from one ski to three skis, so we must be doing pretty darn good up here. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Welcome, everybody.